I'm not, I'm not either. I don't know how to put my, um... My paperwork and all that, you know, without having the space. I don't think I use this. I don't have all my stuff.
My stuff.
I don't have the... No, you don't need to. You don't need your me to sit behind you. I'm right here, I can sit by myself. I don't have the regular agenda on my iPad. With all the supporting material? I don't know why I did that. Uh huh. Here, how about this? I, I have that, but I don't have the supporting material.
If you need it, I'll put it up for you.
So that I can check that over there? Okay, perfect. This is too late. You really think it would be for you alcohol right now?
I would hope.
No.
It's in compliance.
It's in compliance.
Council will stand in session. Roll call.
Vic Santa Cruz. Mr. Cunningham.
Here.
Mr. Durham.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Here.
Mr. Kozakic.
Here.
Mayor Romero.
Here. Item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Pastor Larry Mungia from the Sober Project. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, believe me, this is a privilege and a pleasure. Um, we staff some new faces on the council. Richard, and you guys could tell them about me later, and we don't have time right now. Um, I'm Pastor Larry, and I have a, uh... My ancestors' bones are buried in this valley. Tucson is everything to me. To be able to come and pray for our city. It started with Mayor Wauke up, Mayor Rothschild, and now with Ms. Mayor Romero. What a privilege. So bow your heads if you're so inclined. Dear Lord, we come to you with a petition, a special petition. Lord, we, we ask you to, to take these men and women and their support to speak truth into them, to, to give them wisdom, to knowledge and insight on how this city is supposed to, to be performing. Lord, I ask you to use Tucson as a shining example of how church and state can work together for the goodness of the people, that we could come together and fight poverty, addiction, and the lost. Lord, I ask you to give them special favor in their families, so they won't be distracted from their work. Lord, bless their children and their families. Lord, but most of all, Lord, just keep their heads focused, keep their minds focused on you. In your name we pray. Amen.
A flagrant of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you guys. Take care.
Thank you.
Item two D.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions, report from city manager.
City manager's communication number fifteen dated January twenty eighth is received into and made part of the record. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none. Item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number sixteen dated January twenty eighth is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of mayor and council to report on current events. Are there any current events, um, that mayor and council would want to report? Council member, Councilmember Santa Cruz.
Buenas tardes. Uh, we wanted to en, um, invite mayor and council and the public to the Ward One's open house, which will be February sixteenth. It's a Sunday from one to five P.M. We want to reintroduce the community to, to this space, um, have music, uh, food, and just some time to connect and talk about our, our vision and our goals for 2020.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Cunningham.
Everyone in this room knows that I'm an avid basketball fan. And if you haven't had the opportunity, you may have, you have one, another one on Friday. Uh, the University of Arizona Women's Basketball Team is, uh, playing UCLA on Friday at six P.M. I wish them the best of luck. Good lo, uh, good luck Wildcats and bear down.
Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January ninth, the Community Foundation of Southern Arizona presented a check totaling five thousand one hundred ninety-two to Old Pueblo Community Services for the Tucson Homeless Work Program. These monies were collected for the parking meters designated as donations to stations as well as online, TucsonChange.org. I want to thank Clint Mayby, President and CEO of the Community Foundation of Southern Arizona for their work with the Tucson Change Movement and Parkwise Director Donovan Durbin for his work on getting the meters for the Tucson Change Movement. I want to thank the Downtown Tucson Partnership for their work in creation of the Tucson Change Movement. I also want to thank Tom Lewicki of Old Pueblo Community Services for their work overseeing the homeless work program. And I'd also thank my colleagues on the, in Tucson Mayor and Council, the Tucson City Manager, and Pima County Board of Supervisors, as well as County Administrator Chuck Huckleberry and Deputy County Administrator Jan Lesher for the support of the Tucson Homeless Work Program. I also want to thank Humberto Lopez and HSL Lopez Family Foundation, which initially matched donation help the Tucson Homeless Work Program to launch and be successful. It's been a great collaboration effort that has been a success for these three years. People can make donations to the Tucson Homeless Work Program online at HelpTucson.org or TucsonChange.org. On Tuesday, January fourteenth, I had the privilege of attending the dedication of the new Military Lounge at the Tucson International Airport located in Ward Five. This was a great example of our community coming together to show our support for those serving our country. Also present were council member Paul Durham, City Manager Mike Ortega, and Ted Prozowski from Vice Mayor Cunningham's office. Congratulations to everyone who helped to create this new Military Lounge at the airport. On Thursday, January sixteenth, I had the privilege of attending the grand opening of the Copper Rock Craft Eatery at forty-four, four forty-five South Alvernon. Councilman Kozakic and I helped to cut the grand opening ribbon. Congratulations to Alan Norville and his team at the eatery, and I hope they are, have a big success. On Saturday, January eighteenth, I had the privilege of speaking at the thirtieth annual Pueblo Gardens Martin Luther King Junior Breakfast held at the Holton Stoddle Boys and Girls Club. The Pueblo Gardens Neighborhood Association, which is in Ward Five, is the only neighborhood in the city of Tucson that holds an annual event to recognize and honor the work and the legacy of Dr. King. Tucson Mayor Regina Romero read the city pro, uh, proclamation, making January eighteenth as Martin Luther King Day. Mayor Romo, Romero also assisted me in recognizing individuals who played a key part at the breakfast for thirty years. Congratulations to Pueblo Gardens Martin Luther King Breakfast Committee for their work and commitment. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, the Urban League's Dinner, the thirty-third Annual Drum Major Awards will take place on Thursday, February twentieth at eleven-thirty at the Doubletree Hotel, four forty-five South, South Arizona. And I'm glad to say that Mayor Romero will be honored at that event. Tickets are available, and you can contact the Tucson Urban League Redevelopment Fund. For more information, call seven nine one nine five two two, or go online to TucsonUrbanLeague.org.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Fimbres. I, uh, just wanted to report that we, I just got back on Friday evening. The only reason I did not attend the women's basketball game against ASU. Uh, from Washington, D.C., I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors to represent the city of Tucson. Um, had the amazing pleasure of, of hearing other ideas, other concepts of what mayors around the country are doing regarding climate resiliency, water, um, clean air, clean water, uh, and other, uh, ideas that mayors throughout the country are working on. While I was in D.C., I took full advantage of doing agency visits on behalf of the city of Tucson. I met with the Department of Transportation, um, to talk about several grants that the city of Tucson is applying for and to advocate for those grants. Um, transit-oriented development and infra grants for our bridge on Twenty-second and Kino Parkway. I also met with the Assistant Secretary of the Air Force, uh, Secretary Henderson, to talk about PFAS and, uh, the immense partnership that DM is for our economy and how important they are. But at the same time, uh, talking about, uh, what P has, the levels, alarming levels of PFAS surrounding, uh, the Air Force and, and, and our quality water in our systems. And, and by the way, how much, um, how can the Air Force start, um, helping us remediate as a city and pay for remediation as, as we move forward with this issue? Also met with, um, with Senator Martha McSally to delineate all of the priorities that mayor and council have and the city of Tucson have for the federal government. So it was a very successful, um, well-worked, uh, time in D.C. on behalf of the citizens of the, of the city of Tucson. Came out with a lot, a lot of ideas from the U.S. Conference of Mayors, um, and hopefully partnerships with, um, with private companies on, um, on our census and how we, um, how we put together a campaign, um, to invest in our census. Because as you all know, um, the census, uh, really helps define federal, state funds and other issues for our community. So very successful trip, uh, very well worked. I think we were having about fifteen-hour days, uh, took lots of protein bars with me, uh, but it was great. On that note, I'd like to move to item four, um, to the city manager's communication.
City manager's report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number seventeen dated January twenty eighth is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events. Item five.
Liquor license applications, report from city manager.
City manager's communication number eighteen dated January twenty eighth is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda under item five B, we have two requests for new license. We also have two requests for person location transfer under item five C-ten. Under item five C, we have ten requests for special events. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. That's including five B-two is now in compliance. An appropriate motion would be to forward items five B-one through four and C-one through ten to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, um, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue. Please make sure you have read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call to the audience is scheduled to last for thirty minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. I have, um, many, um, requests to speak at call to the audience. We, we will try and fit everyone in. And there are a few, um, cards regarding Mountain Enclave, and so I'll try and, uh, take them as we receive them, but at the same time, uh, kind of prepare it in with pros, cons. Um, let's, let's start. Mr. City Manager. I'd like to call Lisa Polito, representing Mountain View Neighborhood Association. And if you can, where's our, okay, we're going to be walking around the, the mic to make it easier for you.
So, so just stand out here.
Yes.
My name is Lisa Polito. I'm the Secretary of Mountain View Neighborhood Association. For twenty-one months, Mountain View neighbors have been voicing their concerns about Mountain Enclave subdivision. Major concerns include high-density detached single-family development in the heart of a low-density neighborhood, disregard for conformance with and implementation of goals and objectives of the general plan and its components, including area and neighborhood plans, the methods used to evaluate functional open space, which is the maximum density option netting the developer double the density of standard R-two development, privacy mitigation and solar access for existing neighbors, native plant preservation, sufficient canopy trees, the list goes on. Our concerns expanded to include not only these plan elements, but also PDSD's review of the tentative plat. Repeatedly, PDSD has applied a pretzel logic to the interpretation and determination of code, evaluating functional open space with an interpretation so broad that a riprap-lined ditch serves as functional open space, providing residents with, quote, "visual relief." Evaluating privacy mitigation with an interpretation so narrow that for this single element of code, an FLD is now reviewed as individual lots, like a standard R-two development. As with our plan concerns, this list, too, goes on and on. This pretzel logic extends beyond interpretation. Based on its decision that privacy mitigation is not required, PDSD has exempted this project from submitting a privacy mitigation plan. But UDC doesn't provide for an exemption. Instead, code explicitly requires both submittal of a plan demonstrating conformance and approval of that plan prior to issuance of a building permit. PDSD told us this exemption was granted to, quote, "avoid further delay." In other words, to remove our ability to appeal. Wasn't expecting to hold the microphone with one hand. Code provides for appeals where there is an alleged, quote, "error of abuse or discretion" by a city official. But for an FLD, only architectural variation and privacy mitigation plans can be appealed, so developers achieve better-than-rezoning results without any public oversight or opportunity for appeal, and that's why we're before you today. Under UDC, approval of final plat is the only opportunity for mayor and council to exercise authority over an FLD. And for neighbors, mayor and council authority is the only available remedy. We believe PDSD has demonstrated an abuse of discretion in many of its interpretations, decisions, and determinations, effectively revising code without any public oversight. To protect citizens from this abuse of discretion, we request that you deny this final plat. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Allison Solomon, representing the Metropolitan Pima Alliance.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to support the use of the flexible lot design as it is a land use and development tool for the city of Tucson. As many of you know, we do live in a city that utilizes a suburban code for an urban setting, and because of that, there are restrictions. The benefit of the FLD is that it still allows for infill and density development within the city without undergoing a very extensive rezoning process. And with the current shortage of housing that we have right now, I believe that that's a very valuable tool to allow young professionals like myself to still be homeowners within the city of Tucson. And as we continue to discuss the affordability of housing, we're going to need to continue to use this tool. As many of you may or may not know, this tool is actually responsible for eighty-five percent of the development for residential that occurs in the city. So let's please keep supporting this. Thank you.
Rob Tomlinson.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak today. My name is Robert Tomlinson. I reside at thirty-six eighty-one North River Hills Drive. I have my Bachelor of Science in Regional Development from the University of Arizona. I served, uh, over seven years on the City of Tucson Planning and Zoning Commission, chaired it twice, and served seven years when I lived in Tana Saladita as the Vice Chair of that planning commission. I'm here today to talk about, uh, the value of infill in the city and the importance of the FLD in promoting that kind of infill development. Since I was in college, I've been an urbanist. Uh, the term new urbanist has been used over the years, but I don't think there's anything new about it. The promotion of density and the use of existing infrastructure, uh, and, uh, preventing sprawl is critically important to this city. We're proposing seventy-six homes be built here. The, uh, planning department has, uh, approved this. This has been held up in court. This is the sort of development that we really should be encouraging. The more we can build on existing patches within our urban boundaries, the less we have to spend on infrastructure, emergency services, and all of the other expenses, um, including, uh, all the gas that we burn coming in from, you know, half an hour away from the far east side. The seventy-six homes will be built somewhere. Whether they're built in midtown or on the outskirts, it depends upon the integrity of this process. And I think most of us in this room would agree that we're sprawling too much already. And so I feel like, I feel strongly that we should, uh, approve this plan and move it forward.
Lisa Ann Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Ann Smith. I'm the attorney for the Mountain View Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to speak on this Mountain Enclave subdivision. I want to start by clarifying two things. First, at the last meeting on this topic, I heard it said more than once that the density question for this development has already been determined by prior court proceedings. That is false. The only issue heard by and cited by the court was whether the subdivision development was in conformance with the adopted area plan. The court was not asked to address and did not address the requirements of the UDC or specifically the flexible lot development provisions. And secondly, Mountain View Neighborhood Association is not opposed to development or infill development or this development necessarily. We're simply asking you to make sure that development follows the rules that you have created to make sure that high-density infill development meets the needs of the city, the development, and the neighbors. The UDC gives the mayor and council the authority and the responsibility to make the final determination as to whether or not a plat should be approved. There's nothing in Arizona law that changes that obligation or makes that function purely ministerial. It is for you to decide whether the submitted final plat does or does not meet the requirements of the code. PDSD is not the final decision-maker. The code says that you are. The mayor and council are to consider the recommendation by PDSD, but not to rubber stamp it. The purpose behind the FLD provisions are to create strict rules the development has to follow in order to avoid rezoning, but still build homes at a much higher density than would otherwise be permitted. And so therefore, it is up to you to require that those strict requirements are in fact met. You've been provided with sufficient information to conclude that the plat does not meet the requirements of the code because it does not have enough functional open space to permit the maximum density option, it does not have a privacy mitigation plan, despite the fact that homes are adjacent to, to double-story homes are adjacent to single-story homes outside the development. And PDSD's conclusion that a privacy mitigation plan isn't required is based on its interpretation of the law, but it is up to you to determine what that law means. And the, and there is not an adequate native plant preservation plan, among other things mentioned earlier by Lisa. The FLD process appears to be the, set up to discourage input from citizens and to avoid any reasonable appeal process, so the citizens of Tucson are looking to you to make sure that the developers comply with the FLD in order to create these high-density info projects, which meet the needs of the city, but also the residents of the neighborhoods in which they're located. Because the plat, as it has been submitted, does not comply with the UDC, we are asking you to deny approval and to send it back to the developer and to PDSD to submit a plat that is in compliance. Thank you.
I think, I think it's Mike Leving? Oh, Leon? Mike Leon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Leon. I'm with Red Point Development. I'm a developer in Tucson, although I have no association with the Mountain Enclave subdivision. I do support it in a sense that, uh, I want to support mayor and council to make the decision to support staff who've worked on this for the last, I guess, twenty-one months and the work to put behind it that they have to make sure that this complies with the code and also the wishes of the Tucson citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving others a little bit more time to speak. Uh, Michael Gaiman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Gaiman. I am Vice President of the Tucson Metro Chamber. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak on this important issue this evening. Um, not going to get too much into, uh, the, the code elements. I think other speakers and certainly the legal team will address that. Uh, I will mention that it is relatively rare, based on my experience, for final plats to be pulled, um, but, uh, especially if, if they meet all the code requirements. But I will focus on two things, and those two things are housing affordability and infill development. Um, I just want to read this, uh, this, uh, statement, um, that was given to me by, by a real estate professional, saying, "In the last ten years, the home building industry has been challenged with labor issues and availability of developable land. As a result, it is estimated that we are undersupplied by over five thousand homes when comparing single-family residential permits and household growth. This undersupply of new housing has contributed to rising home prices, lack of resale inventory, and decreased affordability, components that make up one of the reasons companies choose to locate here." Uh, this is a very important issue to us in the economic development realm as we are working with local businesses here, looking to attract new companies. Those individuals need to live somewhere. I know today during your discussion, uh, you talked about foreign direct investment with Mexico. Um, there are a lot of strategies that, that the city and others are going to, uh, employ to try to get new companies to come here. Those people need to live somewhere. As far as infill, Plan Tucson talks about multimodal transportation, connections to transit, integrating land use and transit, locating housing adjacent to services, uh, and supporting greater densities. All of these components rely on infill development with, which this project is. Not approving this project, uh, sends the wrong message to developers trying to build developments on parcels throughout the inner city. This project is legal, has been approved by staff at all levels, it has passed legal challenges by community members, it supports infill, it provides housing to meet our community needs, it supports the goals of Plan Tucson, and ultimately, it deserves your support and approval. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. David Godleski, representing Saba. David Godleski, representing Saba.
Good evening. My name is David Godleski. I'm the President of the Southern Arizona Home Builders Association, 2840 North Country Club Tucson. Honorable Mayor and Council, I'd like to thank you for recognizing the importance of addressing the housing needs of Tucson's current and future residents. Housing has become a defining topic at the local, state, and federal level. Fortunately for all of us, you have a clear understanding of the role of housing and housing affordability in the economic and social well-being of our community. I was also watching the planning session earlier today, and housing was a predominant topic as well as housing affordability. We certainly appreciate the efforts that the city took in the wake of the Great Recession to facilitate new development and quality housing, including extending the protected development rights, improving the permitting process, preventing costly increases in impact fees, and adopting the flexible lot development ordinance. The desire to invest in Tucson remains strong. We all know that developing new subdivisions is costly, it's full of risk, and that's anywhere you have those obstacles. And because of this, home builders have to have those tools that I mentioned, as well as the certainty and consistency when it comes to the application of the existing rules and regulations. The city's tentative plat process has ensured the proposed subdivision meets with all the code requirements. And once that hurdle has been cleared, the final plat has been more of a procedural approval. In other words, there's certainty to that developer that once they meet the code requirements, as determined by staff, that project will move forward. This is the certainty that builders have depended on and need going forward. Saba and its members are committed to partnering with the city to ensure the availability of new homes at all different price points and to continue to encourage private investment. I think we can all move together towards that goal. Thank you.
Switching gears a little bit, there's other topics called to the audience, so I'd like to call on Martha McClemmons, Armory Park Historic Zone Advisory Board.
Good evening. I wanted to make a comment on item eight, which, what, nine o'clock tonight we might hit? In the rezoning, in our historic, it's funny, flexible lots, ouch, it's a good news, bad news thing. But for tonight, it's the rezoning on South Stone where we're taking a small leg of what was an HPZ and moving it into Historic Commercial, I believe, right, John? And it's another thing where we have met with the developer. It would have been a bad game of Twister had we tried to keep it in with their development, which is frankly, one of the nicer things I'm seeing that's going to happen downtown as opposed to some of the things I've seen happen downtown. And with that, thank you. Carry on.
Karen Green with the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city manager. My name is Karen Green, and I live in the Dunbar Spring neighborhood. Tonight, I represent the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition, BNC for short, and I would like to invite other BNC supporters to stand up. The BNC is bitterly disappointed by your recent decision of January 7, 2020, to cancel the anti-displacement task force and instead reinstate the defunct Metropolitan Housing Commission. The BNC has spent the past year and a half meeting with council members, city staff, and the city manager, working to create a small but nimble task force represented by residents of our most impacted barrios and neighborhoods. Our goal was to quickly develop potential policy changes and solutions to the pressing issues of gentrification and displacement. Instead, the specter of urban renewal, with its disregard for the human social impact, still haunts us today. Your decision will cause unnecessary delays while more tax incentives attract developers and speculators who seek to profit on the backs of ordinary community members. With each passing day, we lose more of our city's history, and rising property values and rents put more of our community members at risk. The Barrio Neighborhood Coalition urges you to alter course. By appointing an anti-displacement task force now and giving the most affected residents a seat at the table, your message will be loud and clear. The lessons of urban renewal have been learned, and never again will we discount the value of any community member or the contribution they make to our collective society. We look forward to working with you as valuable partners for creative solution-making. Thank you.
Thank you. John Burr, representing Armory Park.
Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, I thought item eight was actually a public hearing, but I'll be brief. Please pass ordinance 11721 tonight. I think we've negotiated everything, but it is incumbent on Exhibit A, especially Historic Resources, item 11, 12, and 13, and the map, because the area in the newly assessed parcels is substantially different than the assessor's records. But I think we've negotiated everything, and there is equitable historic preservation and buildable possibilities, and all of the reviews are incumbent on this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Raoul Ramirez, representing Self.
Thank you, Mayor Romero, and councilpeople and staff. I'm here representing myself, but also I work closely with Barrio Neighborhood Coalition. So my comments relate to the canceling of the gentrification task force and moving towards institution, re-instituting the Menlo, I'm sorry, the Metropolitan Housing Commission. I must share, I was very perplexed by your decision, given the time and energy you and council folks expended in creating the template for the task force as a means of dealing with gentrification and displacement, and especially since it came in at the 12th hour. I had an opportunity to view the video of the study session and the discussion and the rationale given to make this change. I don't get it. I am perplexed about this. If the Housing Commission existed and had basically the same makeup, by that I mean residents, nonprofits, developers, and the charge, that being the mission, why wait over a year and a half to act on this pressing issue? I say a year and a half because that is when the Barrio Neighborhood Coalition started addressing this major concern and engaged you in expressing our concerns. Now this time has been lost, and the problem has continued to grow. I am also confused because from all indications, we had a good working relationship and a sense of cooperation between us. From my perspective, it would have been made more sense to engage us in conversation, letting us know what your plans were instead of at the last minute. I'm not sure where this goes now, but let's talk. And like my mom would say, hablando se entienden las cosas, which means talking, we understand each other. Thank you.
All righty, thank you so much. Item seven.
Consent agenda items A through B.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval amendments. Item B is an intergovernmental agreement amendment with the Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County for the Houghton Road corridor project. Thus, the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
All righty, may I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the matters on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mr. Finbres.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
The item on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0. Item eight.
Zoning C91921, Armory Park Historic Preservation Zone Boundary Amendment, 375 South Stone Avenue, Stone Avenue, HC3 to C3, and C3 to HC3. City managers report ordinance adoption. Report from city manager, ordinance number 11721.
City manager's communication number 22 dated January 28 is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to amend a portion of the HPZ boundary, HC3 to C3 zoning. The rezoning site is located on the southeast corner of South Stone Avenue on East 14th Street. The zoning examiner recommends approval of C3 and HC3 zoning. Staff recommends approval of C3 and HC3 zoning and adoption of the ordinance subject to certain conditions. Is the applicant or representative present? Where's the microphone? Microphone?
Somebody walk off. We know what you're going to say anyway.
Yeah. So I'm pretty sure, are you agreeable with the requirements as proposed? Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
We are agreeable to the requirements and the conditions.
Excellent.
Carrie Sylvan, representing the landowner. We are amenable to all of the required conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read ordinance 11721 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11721 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located near South Stone Avenue and East 14th Street in case C91921, 375 South Stone Avenue, HC3 to C3, and C3 to HC3, and setting an effective date.
What is the council's pleasure?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this has been curious.
Councilmember Kazachik.
Extensive public process. The parties involved are in agreement. It's amending the boundaries of the Armory Park Historic District. I would move that we adopt ordinance 11721 with the conditions attached to the rezoning. Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kazachik.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Finbres.
Aye.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Ordinance 11721 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item nine.
Final plat, S18094, Mountain Enclave Lots 1 through 76, and Common Areas A, B, and C. This item is continued from the meeting of December 17, 2019. Report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 23 dated January 28 is received into and made part of the record. What is the council's pleasure? Councilmember Durham.
The Mountain Enclave subdivision has received a lot of attention by both neighbors and staff. I have spent a great deal of time reviewing the FLD through the process and have personally met with the neighbors four times, two of which were to try and ensure there were open lines of communication. I and my staff have met with representatives of MVNA and listened to each and every allegation of non-compliance with the UDC. I have spent, I and my staff have spent as much time as necessary with Scott Clark and other staff at PDSD to check out each and every allegation. It has been a long and time-consuming process. I have concluded that this development is in compliance with applicable law and the UDC. I want to acknowledge that the neighbors have truly felt disenfranchised through this process, and I hope we can alleviate this issue moving forward. I want to acknowledge that KB Homes is committed to planting 106 trees and will install landscaping around the subdivision's perimeter, that they are willing to work with neighbors related to privacy, and have committed to no second-story homes as well, no second-story balconies, as well as to install a decorative masonry fence around the development, and that the drainage basin is in the northwest, in the northwest corner will have an ADA accessible pathway. With that, I move to approve the final plat as presented.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kazachik.
I appreciate everyone's attention to this, and I don't come into this feeling as though anybody has been acting in bad faith. There has been a lot of work attached to it. Make, respond to a couple of comments made during the call to the audience. It was either Michael Geiman or David Godleski that referenced Plan Tucson. Plan Tucson also incorporates policies, I'm reading from it, policies to protect established residential neighborhoods by supporting compatible development. So we're here tonight to talk about whether or not this is compatible. Plan Tucson policies also promote compatibility with adequate buffering of the surrounding development, attractive urban vegetation, conservation, and the enhancement of environmentally sensitive habitat. We're not here talking about, again, to respond to one of the speakers, eliminating the FLD as a process. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about whether or not this project complies with the FLD. We're also not here to talk about whether or not we support infill. Of course, we support infill, and we approve infill projects all the time, Ward 6, Midtown. So that's not what we're talking about either. Lisa mentioned the court decision. I was going to mention that as well. The court only ruled on whether or not the area plan was being complied with. It didn't address the UDC, it didn't address the FLD. And finally, with respect to the speakers, and this was Michael Geiman, it is 100% rare, in my experience, that we're challenging a final plat. And that is because up until this one came along, we were told by the city attorney that our role in final plats was only ministerial and that we were obligated by law to pass them. When asked for the case law supporting that position, it was clear that the case law on which that was being based were examples of governing bodies, whether it be a city council or a board of supervisors, who were holding up approval of a project so they could change the law so that it became out of compliance. That's not what we're talking about here tonight. So what about the Mountain Enclave? Functional open space, I agree. We agree that the Mountain Enclave can use the FLD if it meets the functional open space standards. And I disagree when staff says that it does. And by the way, if the notion that somebody said, you know, staff has looked at this extensively and therefore mayor and council are obliged to agree, if four of us disagree, that doesn't necessarily make staff right. And that's the reason that I'm challenging this. Paul? So I disagree when you say that it meets the functional open space standards. Staff has put together an extensive justification of their position, listing several UDC sections. One of the sections that they omit is where it clearly states that functional open space shall be, quotes, "conveniently located and usable," located to and usable by the maximum number of residential units. Detention basins are not usable by residential units. And the notion that you're going to put an ADA ramp into a detention basin is just silly. They also don't reference item J in 873, and that requires functional access for semi-ambulatory and non-ambulatory persons. Again, putting an ADA ramp into a detention basin makes no sense, and the Mountain Enclave detention basins are sloped and inaccessible anyways. The same is true of the detention basin at that south, at that northwest corner. That's over 10,000 square feet of this being called functional open space. It's not functional open space, and this project shouldn't qualify simply based on The project also references landscape buffers as being appropriate to count as functional open space, but here, the developer clearly says that their parking areas
open space, but here, the developer clearly says that their parking areas are located in common areas to back out onto private streets, and with that, they acknowledge that all their parking is on street by definition, therefore, and therefore, they're rather, they're adjacent to streets, and therefore, the landscape buffers are required, and you can't double-dip and say it's gonna be private streets and then also call it functional open space. You can't have it both ways. Let's talk about privacy mitigation for a second. You say that none of the two-story residences are adjacent to existing single stories because there's a common area separating them, and FLD requires the entire site to be considered as one parcel. You can't spin off a 10-foot landscape buffer that sits on the perimeter of the site and treat it as a separate parcel in order to achieve privacy mitigation. You can't have it both ways. The buffer, and so our UDC says that the buffer is a common boundary of 20 feet or Therefore, the MES buildings are necessarily adjacent to the immediately surrounding residences. You can't call it a buffer, and then you can't pull it out and use it that way, and then still use the FLD as one integrated site. Let's talk about density for a second. We agree that the FLD option allows for increased density if the plat complies with the FLD requirements. It fails on functional open space, it fails on privacy mitigation, and therefore, based on those two criteria alone, we should be saying no to this. But one more point is that when staff went and did their assessment of density and compared it to surrounding areas, they used a different standard on the surrounding areas than they're using on the FLD plat. If you, what they did is they looked at the surrounding areas, looked at the number of residences on the site, and then did the division and came up with six residences per acre, or 11, or whatever the number was, but when they went to the Mountain Enclave, they used the entire six acres and did this, divided it by 76. If you use the same standard that they used on the surrounding area, you're doing .048 on the Mountain Enclave, you're using .04 acres divided by one, means you're doing 25 residences per acre if you use the same standard. See, so staff needs to be consistent in the way that they're doing their analysis. I'm also troubled by the continuing, and this relates back to the area plan, that the plats only need to be in general conformity with area plans. Who makes that determination? Well, in this case, we're relying on some judge who had no part in the conversation, didn't have anything to do with the language that we're analyzing here tonight, who says, well, reading the entire thing, this person feels like this is in general conformity. That standard is so vague as to have no meaning, beyond the interpretation that somebody who's unaffiliated with this conversation applies to it. Finally, this, we all received input from KB, and by the way, I don't believe anyone from your group is operating in bad faith either. We received plenty of input from staff and from the Mountain Enclave residents. So to kind of break the tie, I decided I would go on to PRO and do my own analysis. One of the curious factors to me was that on the PRO site, we see that one of the initial PDSD reviewers is now part of the KB team. I'm not alleging bad faith again, but it doesn't surprise me, therefore, that the informal, the internal reviews that we have conducted have validated our initial opinions. One of the reviewers is now part of the KB team, so that's great, and I've worked with this person before, and I think, wonderful person and all of that, but it would simply lend credence to the notion that, as I said at the last meeting, that all our internal reviews are going to do is to validate the first ones we did. And secondly, and finally, another one of our reviewers, David Rivera, indicated in the comment column, section 3.3 of the UDC, an applicant has one year from the date of application to obtain approval of a site plan, and he says that one-year expiration date is August 17 of 2019. This is on the PRO site. If you go back to the final page of the PRO site where the approvals are given, this project wasn't finally approved until September of 19. The engineering and the zoning approvals came six weeks after the expiration date. This thing shouldn't even be in front of us. It shouldn't have been in front of us the first time it came to us, and it certainly shouldn't be in front of us now. So either the expiration dates matter or they don't, either our approval process is legit or it isn't. So this fails on privacy, fails on functional open space, it had expired six weeks before we gave final approval, and we shouldn't even be ruling on it. So with all of that, I would offer a substitute motion that we deny this FLD and send it back for further review.
There is a motion on the floor. Any second?
There you have it.
Motion dies for lack of a second. What I'd like to do is I'd like our city attorney, please, we're having a meeting, do not be respectful and do not interrupt. I'd like either the city attorney or Scott Clark to fill us in on what we have in front of us. What we talked about as mayor and council on December 17, when we delayed this particular item, there are a few things that the neighbors were concerned about. That was the definition of functional open space, and for the neighbors, the lack of additional open space, how adjacency applies to privacy mitigation and privacy mitigation and density requirements for the flexible lot development. Can you please talk about that one by one as how it relates to this particular case, and what are the facts that you have at hand?
Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councils. On the December 17 council meeting, council asked staff to go back and look at four areas: functional open space, native plant preservation, privacy mitigation, I'm sorry, five, density, and the stated purposes of the FLD. So we went back and looked at that. Seven staff participated in this review, along with two attorneys from the city attorney's office, and in going through this, a developer can select an option to develop under the FLD where they select an option to meet maximum density. They did that here, and in doing so, they must meet a criteria, one of eight criteria. The criteria they selected was number four, which is 20% additional functional open space. The code states that 20% of open space will be useful for passive or active recreational uses such as trails, walking past picnic areas, and playgrounds. And additionally, functional open space is defined as landscape areas which provide visual relief, shade, screening, buffering, and other environmental amenities. In doing the calculations for this, the required functional open space was a total of 20,000 square feet, 20,444. The actual provided by the applicant using the current standards is 26,500 square, 5250, 26,523 square feet. So under the current code, the staff's perspective and review by the attorneys, this is a compliant plan under the functional open space. For native plant preservation, two plans were submitted. The initial plan did not identify viable trees. The neighborhood association brought that to our attention. I had David Marhafka, who is our arborist from TDOT, our arborist, and then Mr. Tree walk the site. They found 20 viable trees. I requested that the applicant resubmit reviser plan. The new plan goes to the two-to-one ratio, so you'll see 64 mesquite trees, where 40 are required, and the remaining 38 trees are of associated spaces. On the privacy mitigation, this is probably the biggest consternation for everyone involved in this. The code defines that this is not adjacency, and this is something we need to look at, so privacy mitigation is not required because proposed homes do not meet the adjacent definition of adjacency in the code. Regarding density, the calculation is pretty straightforward, it comes directly out of the UDC, and it's a simple division of the number of homes by the acreage. So you've got 6.29 acres, 76 units, results in a density of 12.08 acres. This is comparable to the surrounding neighbors, we use the same calculation on them. The way we, it couldn't be scientific. We had to count air conditioning units and addresses to determine how many homes were on each one of these lots. And so you end up with a range of densities around this development. You've got seven single-family immediately adjacent, eight multifamily, and the range of densities goes from 13.2 units an acre to 2.9. So this is compatible with the densities that exist out there now. Regarding the purpose statement, so a purpose statement explains policies, but they are not the operative regulations. When a reviewer has to go through and review this, they have to go to the UDC code sections and go right down those lines. This does not meet all of the purpose statements stated in the FLD. It does meet some, and that's not uncommon. So it does meet providing open spaces as usable and includes suitably located active and passive recreational amenities such as trails, walking past picnic areas, coordinating architectural styles, building forms, and building relationships within the development and surrounding land development. This was reviewed by a design review professional that is external to the city, four times. On the fourth time, they approved it. Mitigating the heat island effect by requiring such measures as canopy trees throughout the FLD project, so they've submitted a native plant preservation plan that does that. We've also reduced the street width, which reduces the amount of asphalt that will maintain heat. And then finally, creating incentives for appropriate urban infill development on lots with site constraints. So again, it doesn't meet all the purpose statements, but it's not required to, but it does meet some of them. Finally, you asked us to meet with the neighbors. We were able to do that yesterday. We did reach out to them twice. The first time, they asked for us to move it to the evening, we did. They asked us for an agenda, we gave them an agenda, said we're gonna talk about functional open space, the things I've listed here. And KB Homes were in attendance. Their concern is it wouldn't be a fair meeting, and they wanted a third-party mediator there, and then declined our meeting request. We did reach out to them, agreed, they accepted that meeting. We met with them yesterday. I don't think we resolved any of the issues they're concerned about, but we heard them, we did provide responses. So finally, in reviewing this with staff and the attorneys, we find it to be a compliant plat. We recognize there is issues with the FLD, we've been saying that for a while. We come back and talk to you on February 4 with ideas how to look at this. This is your primary infill development tool for the moment.
Mr. Attorney, can you fill in, what is the legal responsibility of mayor and council at this moment?
Mayor members of the council, based on the finding that this is a compliant plat, I believe the only legally defensible action by the mayor and council tonight is to approve the plat as presented. The only issue in determining whether to approve a final plat for the mayor and council is whether the plat complies with and conforms with the applicable subdivision regulations. This application has been reviewed multiple times in a manner that the director has just described, and I believe that under Arizona law, the only option is to approve the plat.
Any other discussion by my colleagues on the council?
Has the site plan been approved?
Yes, the site plan's been approved. This is a fully functional plan.
As is reflected on the PRO site in September of 19?
I couldn't answer that, I don't have it in front of me.
That's what the PRO site says. So what does it mean when it says that the one-year expiration date is on August 17 of 2019? Why are we approving something that expired, and the UDC says that a site plan application that's been in review for a period of a year and has not been approved is considered denied?
I haven't seen that comment before. So, well, there's no way I can respond to that without seeing all the documents that led to such a statement.
So maybe Mr. Rankin can.
Mayor members of the council, and I'm not gonna have the ability to go through the PRO notes to respond to issues like this, but what I can tell you is that this plat, this final plat, which is in conformance with the tentative plat that was previously approved, and to the extent that there are any delays that have been attributable to our review and delays from scheduling for mayor and council, and then bringing it back to the mayor and council, would not be attributed to the applicant. So my advice to the mayor and council remains as I just stated.
And so the comment on the PRO site that says this expired in August of 19, and that's per the UDC, is something we're just to ignore?
This comment, and again, first time I'm seeing it, it's been brought to my attention, relates to approval of site plan. This is the, what your consideration tonight is, is approval of the final plat.
So Councilmember Kozaczek, I think that, I think you've made your point.
Well, not quite.
Well...
If the site plan had expired six weeks before we were asked to approve the final plat, why are we being asked to approve the final plat?
Because the final plat is being brought to you within the time allowed after the approval of the tentative plat, and the final plat remains in conformance with the tentative plat as previously approved.
Councilmember Kozaczek, I think that as we continue this discussion, I'd like to add some comments. This is what I believe. As it stands, I think the FLD has pockets of ambiguity, which lead to confusion and later become a point of contention to community members and developers. These ambiguities do not align with the goal of the city of Tucson, which is to encourage community-minded infill projects and manage smart growth in the city of Tucson. It is not smart growth when our unified development code and general zoning standards are not conducive to the goals and the priorities of the city council, or Plan Tucson, or the community, or its neighborhoods. One of the bigger picture challenges in front of us is how do we align zoning standards with the goals of sustainability and affordability without triggering preemptive consequences? I think this item poses a valuable lesson for the city of Tucson about the importance of having clearly identified goals for development and supportive legal parameters to implement that vision. The next time that the FLD will come in front of mayor and council is in February, we will have a discussion at study session, and in March, it will be returned to mayor and council. At that time, it will be the right time to have a conversation about the many legitimate concerns and serious flaws the community is experiencing firsthand due to the lack of direct goal-setting of the FLD. What are the means to grant special conditions? Should we eliminate single-family zoning? Do we better define adjacency? What things have to happen before a privacy mitigation plan is required? I believe in creating density in the city of Tucson. The more density we plan in the city of Tucson, the more we see investment in our transit system, the more affordability we could see. But the flexible lot development has ambiguities and flaws. And so with that, I'd like to consider, we have a motion at the table and a second. I'd like to consider any other discussion or go to roll call.
You're all right. You question?
Vice Mayor.
So a few things really quick on the discussion side, and I'm gonna start here. My hands are tied because we're legally obligated to vote for this as a cop-out, so I'm not gonna do that. I don't think that's fair for you guys. The second piece is that I'm not really happy with the end result. I'm not, like, the whole process sounds to me like it was muddled from the beginning. But this is kind of what, one of the questions, one of the discussions we had, especially for the Mountain Enclave folks who came to my office, and actually, you know, contrary to what you might believe, I totally listened. And one of the things you brought up to me was the multi-housing issue. Let's say we would have done a multi-housing complex. So I was like, you know, and I remember, we were talking about it, I was like... So I was like, you know, and I remember, we were talking about it, I was like, yeah, you kind of got, it kind of wasn't really good that they did that whole third row, the fourth row. We probably could have reshaped it to three rows. And we kind of went through that, and I was thinking, well, let's say this was multi-housing. What would this, what would this be in compliance if this was a multi-housing project? In other words, what, if they would have had to do multi-housing, what would they have been allowed to do, and what would they have been required to do? And I got lots of answers. I asked all kinds of questions to staff. I said, hey, you know, what's the parking requirement? They said, well, they would have had to have 171 parking spots. And I said, well, that's interesting. Well, how many do they have? Well, if you count all the, if you count all the parking spots in each garage, they have 221 parking spots. So, okay, well, then that makes that piece. And then I said, well, what about the setbacks? Would the setbacks have been required had it been a multi-housing project? And I don't have that answer. Scott, did you guys do the research on the UDC piece with the setbacks if it was a multi-housing project?
Using the FLD, the setbacks for multifamily and single-family residential are the same.
Okay. So I went through, and I asked a few more about height. They would have had 25 feet, and they would have, they would have, I think they're using 21 feet, and they would have had 25 feet or vice versa, but I couldn't get to that point. And so then I said, all right, I've got to do it with my gut. Is this a good infill project for Tucson or not? And I actually think it is. And, you know, I know there's people that are really disappointed to hear that from me, but I do. I actually think that we could have gotten worse. I actually think that if we would have, I don't, I'm serious. I mean, you can laugh, but I seriously believe that. And the bottom line is, is that I'm not going to cop out and hide about this. I'm going to say, yeah, I think this is a good enough project to vote for, so I'm going to support it. But I don't, I think the neighbors' concerns are totally valid. I think we absolutely have to review the FLD. This is the second time this functional open space argument has come in, where there's like this vagueness about it, where, you know, when I think of open space, I don't think congratulations, you put up a frickin' barbecue, it's open space. It's not what it is. Open space is supposed to be open space. So I get it. I also think we could have done some things in the lower half to actually put in a pocket park. I think there were all kinds of opportunities missed with this process, but it's too late for that now. And I just, that's where I'm coming from, and you may completely disagree with me and not like it, but I'm going to tell you what I think from the heart, and that's where I was at.
Vice Mayor, there is a motion in a second. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mayor Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Phimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
No.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1. Item, item nine? Item 10.
Updates on state and national legislation and regional committees report from city manager.
Let me find this case. City manager's communication, number 20, dated January 28th, is received into and made part of the record. Are there any updates on state and national legislation or regional committees? Andrew Greenhill. Hi, Andrew.
Hi. Honorable mayor, members of the council, a few quick state and national updates. First, I just want to make sure everyone got a copy of the updated 2020 League of Cities' local government directory. This has pertinent and timely information about all your colleagues in all the 91 cities across Arizona. It is updated, it even includes the newly elected council members and mayor of the city of Tucson. So there are copies for you. If you need any additional copies, please let me know. Also, I provided some answers to questions from Councilmember Phimbres on state and national legislation. I provided those earlier today. There's some on the US Postal Service, there's some on the PFAS issue, and then also a question on the Clean Water Act rules that were just rolled back this week by the Trump administration. I'm happy to answer any questions on those. And then finally, I've provided information about bills at the legislature. Just as an update, there are about 1,100 bills now that have been introduced at the state legislature. We've been through all of them. There's a collection of bills that staff has reviewed, staff has looked at all of them. There's about 50-some-odd bills that I'm presenting to you today for your, with recommendations, looking for your support of those recommendations. Happy to answer any questions on those bills for you. Again, with those recommendations and your approval of them, we go to the state legislature and argue for or against bills according to your direction. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you need direction on these bills at this time?
That would benefit us. Committees are starting to hear bills at the legislature. Your direction helps us be able to represent the mayor and council, be able to say that the city of Tucson is for or against certain bills. So yes.
Are there any of these bills that you'd like to highlight for us before we move into giving you direction?
Yeah, Mayor Romero, members of the council, there's, again, there's a lot of bills here, but many of them, for those of you who've been on the council for a while, you've seen many of these bills before. Some of you have requested certain bills here. I know there's one, 2686, that I know I've had some discussion with some of you on individually. That's colloquially known as the Southwest Gas Bill. That's a bill that would take away the ability of cities to pass any kind of ordinances that would regulate utilities and the choosing between utilities through the denial of building permits within your municipalities. Staff is recommending opposition to that bill.
Should I, okay, there's a motion?
We need a second, right?
Oh, second. I recommend that we follow the, I'm going through them as we speak. We're just doing this one bill first? This is the Southwest Gas Bill? We doing them as a package? What are we doing?
As a package.
Then I have a question.
So there's a question.
You did say so moved. You didn't say like, so moved this one bill.
No, no. Okay. But when he was talking about the one bill that we wanted to oppose, I said, yes. Okay. But on H2558, there's no recommendation, and that's the bill, voting rights, felonies, automatic restoration. And I would, that's Representative Engel has submitted that for sponsor. I would move to second that, or...
To support.
To support.
Yeah, I apologize for the typo on that one. Yes, the staff recommendation is to support. Mayor and council have supported in the past the restoration of voting rights for felons who have served their sentences without having to pay fines or fees before those rights are restored.
Do I make the motion to support?
I'll second that one. So I need clarification. You want to support the package of recommendations by our intergovernmental...
Well, I'll make the motion to support all of them.
Okay. All righty, so there's a motion.
And oppose the ones that are recommended by city staff.
So there is a motion to support the bills that our intergovernmental relations staff is recommending that we support and those that we oppose. There's a second, and any discussion or questions?
Just a few things for public disclosure. One of them in here that is probably pretty important is the Gila River Bridge. And I know that's really unsexy, but it's really actually important. The Gila River Bridge was one of those situations where there were multiple jurisdictions blocking the widening of that one specific piece of I-10 forever. And as a result, we've had a bottleneck of traffic where we go from three lanes to two lanes to two lanes to three lanes up and down I-10 for the last almost 26 years. One of the things, one of the unintended consequences of that is that the safety record of that ribbon of road has decreased. And that is a widely traveled road by Tussanans. A large majority of us go to Tucson at least once a month. First, I'm, no, to Tucson, leave Tucson and go to that other city there, up there, over there, at least once a month. And this is a big thing to keep us safe. This is a bill that's actually introduced by the opposite party of me, but I'm going to support it. So I wanted to point that one out because it's, that's like that pragmatic piece of government, other than the ideologically piece, well, for many of the people up there, the ideologically impaired piece of government that goes on. So I'm happy to support. The package is recommended by staff, and I second my colleague, Mr. Phimbres's motion.
So there is a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Any other reports, Andrew?
No, that's all.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Item 11.
Adjournment?
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, February 4th, at 5:30 PM, this time at mayor and council chambers, at city hall, located at 255 West Alameda. Thank you, everyone.